Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the mean to order. This is for round two. Please, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the mean to order. Everybody's here. Please turn off your cell phones, pagers, anything that makes noise. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our moment of silence for this evening, I would like to reflect on the thousands of people who lost their homes and some who lost their lives in the violence storms yesterday in North Carolina. Those governments will face substantial challenges. The lives of countless people have been altered for at least a generation. Our thoughts and concerns go out to those communities, and we extend our sincere hope that they can recover and rebuild and create the life that has been lost to them due to this violent act of nature. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Mr. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any one signed in for public comment related to the agenda?
No, Madam President, there is not.
All right, we have two sets of meetings to be approved, and Item 6. Item 5 is a revised set of minutes which have been circulated. Madam Clerk, do you want to comment on the revision?
Yes, Madam President. Our new Law Director requested that additional information be included to the motion made by Ms. Simon on Page 3 of the minutes to reflect the actual motion that was made. This particular revised document has been uploaded onto the county's website and has been there for more than 24 hours' notice and has been circulated to everyone.
All right, is there a motion to?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move we approve the April 5th meeting minutes revised as of 4/18/2011.
Moved by Mr. Germana.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schron. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If the ayes have it. The minutes from April 12 have been circulated. Is there a motion to adopt? Moved by Mr. Greenspan, seconded by Mr. Brady. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The motions are approved. Mr. Fitzgerald is unavailable this evening. Is there any comment from the Executive's Office?
Yes, Madam Chair, and to the counsel. I would have the contract signed and executed by the executive by the end of the week. They're just waiting for a signature. And also, in reference to, there's a ceremonial proclamation or document that we wanted to present to a group of students in recognition of Earth Day, which is this Friday. They're a little behind, and they're also students represented by Mr. Bibb, and I was asking, if possible, after Justin's presentation, if we can recognize those students with this proclamation.
All right, well, that's fine. All right, Item 8, Committee Reports and Consideration of Resolutions for Second Reading, Adoption, and Suspension of the Rule. Let me indicate for the record also that this is a special meeting, and the current rules of counsel provide that a special meeting requires that we have a suspension of the rule so that we cannot adopt anything at a special meeting without the suspension of the rules. Mr. Miller.
Madam President, actually, these particular items would require suspension regardless because we're doing them on second reading.
That's correct, thank you.
And I would move that Rule 9D requiring that ordinances and resolutions be heard at three separate regular meetings of counsel, and Rule Number 13, we don't have to suspend 13H, just 9D be suspended, and that Resolution Number 2011-0117 and -119, 120, 125, 126, 127, 128, 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, and 158 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
All right, so these items have been to committee, and we're going to adopt them because they need to be moved on and become effective, and so we'll be suspending the rules. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 2011-0117, a resolution approving specifications and estimate of cost in the amount not to exceed $365,121 for construction of an energy center at the Cuyahoga County Fairgrounds related to the Fairgrounds Wind Turbine Project, authorizing the Director of the Office of Procurement and Diversity to advertise for bids on requisition Number 19570, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Resolution Number 2011-0119, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 104762 dated October 28, 2010, that made an award on requisition Number 15326 to Phillips Electric in the amount of $1,401,300 for a wind turbine generator to be located at the county fairgrounds for the period November 19, 2010 through November 18, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Madam President. The only discussion is that this item, you'll see, is coming off the agenda as far as an item for Phillips Electric, and you'll see that the follow-on action as far as 0120 will be replacing that with the wind turbine coming in from Halas Power Systems. So, it'll be a direct replacement for that. And I think that it's also very positive to note that not only will the wind turbine be out there on the county fairgrounds with that next item, but also, the item that we just passed in 0117 is the educational training component that actually brings forth that. And as was brought forth in the testimony, we have Polaris Joint Vocational School that is actually putting forth part of their training and education program, and Polaris JVS to be doing stuff in the area of training, as is Lorain Community College building that in to their two-year associate's degree program.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0120.
Resolution Number 2011-0120, a resolution making an award on requisition Number 15326 and authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with Halas Power Systems in the amount of $1,400,000 for a wind turbine generator to be located at the county fairgrounds for the period March 22, 2011 through March 21, 2012, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. Madam Chair, if I may, the discretion that I have as clerk on the actual legislation for this item, it was stated that this was based upon the bid evaluations conducted, and it's been corrected to read proposal evaluations conducted.
Move to adopt with that recognition.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0125.
Resolution Number 2011-0125, a resolution authorizing an economic development loan in the amount not to exceed $500,000 to 7204 Pearl Road Associates to assist in the acquisition and renovation of a facility located at 7204 Pearl Road, Middleburg Heights, authorizing the county executive and/or director of development to execute all documents required in connection with said loan, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
All right, moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion on this? This came out of the Economic Development Committee. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution 1, I'm sorry, 0126.
Resolution Number 2011-0126, a resolution authorizing an economic development loan in the amount not to exceed $53,000 to Archer Realty for infrastructure improvements of its headquarters facility located at 15601 Brook Park Road, Brook Park, authorizing the county executive and/or director of development to execute all documents required in connection with said loan, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I don't get many of these things in my district, so I move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion?
Hopefully, Mr. Miller, you'll find that we're going to be doing these things all over the county, and you're going to see economic development growing. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0127.
Resolution Number 2011-0127, a resolution authorizing a Brownfields revolving loan fund sub-grant award between the County of Cuyahoga through the Department of Development and the City of Cleveland in the amount not to exceed $454,953, authorizing the county executive and/or director of development to execute all documents in relation to the revolving loan fund sub-grant agreement, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
All right, moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0128.
Resolution Number 2011-0128, a resolution authorizing an economic development loan in the amount not to exceed $500,000 to MB&amp;W Consumer Collections Incorporated for the acquisition of a facility located at 7088 West 130th Street, Middleburg Heights, authorizing the county executive and/or director of development to execute all documents required in connection with said loan, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0129.
Resolution.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Resolution Number 2011-0129, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract number CE1100132 with Union Eye Care Center Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $549,010 for the provision of vision insurance to county employees for the period January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2013, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt. Second.
Seconded, moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion on this? Anything from the committee?
Madam President, in passing this resolution, there is a clause in the contract, so even though it's for two years, there's a clause in the contract Director Hare put in to be released from obligation within, as long as they give them 90 days, sort of something comes up.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0153.
Resolution Number 2011-0153, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with MHS Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $550,611 for crisis intervention and assessment services for the Children Who Witness Violence Program for the period January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion on this? Jones, I'm sorry. Any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0154.
Resolution Number 2011-0154, a resolution authorizing the county executive on behalf of the Cuyahoga County Board of Developmental Disabilities to enter into an amendment to contract number CE10448 with Tarrick Roofing Incorporated for various roof replacement projects, to change the scope of services and the terms effective November 29, 2010, and for a decrease in the amount of $20,549, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the locations as printed on the agenda, Item J1 through 4.
Madam Chairperson.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. In committee, the only thing that came up was, you know, we've seen this now a few times where the resolution is actually giving us the authority to decrease the amount, in this case, by $20,500-plus on the contract, and a question that came up in committee was, why is it necessary that it come back to the committee for the decrease? I've been assured that it is necessary for contractual reasons, but I was wondering if the Law Director or someone might be able to, sorry to not say this in advance, but it's, this is 0154, it's a decrease on the contract of $20,500. The question is, why do these things have to come back to us? And if, you know, since it's a matter of not spending money, why do we have to decide not to spend money? Why do we have to formally decide not to spend money? And maybe somebody has that answer.
All right, why don't we make a motion? We need a motion to adopt this, and then we'll have discussions.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Brady. That's an excellent question.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I could offer some guidance on that question, which is that under the proposed contracting and procurement ordinance that we're working on, it's going to provide that you're going to be able to net the additions and subtractions, and if it's under $10,000 to the positive, the executive's going to be able to execute them, and if it's over $10,000, they're going to go to the Board of Control. So, we generally won't see these things under the new legislation.
That would satisfy me.
Okay.
No, that's correct with respect to the new one, and I don't have a copy of the existing -- this was done before me, but the existing ordinance, if any change orders are amended because it's extending the life of, there's an option, so that may be the reason, but I was not involved in this predated me.
Right. We're just always looking for a way to streamline necessary, yeah.
Well, you can put that on your list of items that you're researching.
And the new contracting ordinance, my understanding is it's going to be the nets on the change orders, so that's one of the revisions that are being discussed.
All right, all those in favor. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0155.
Resolution Number 2011-0155, a resolution authorizing an award on requisition Number 18597 to Metro Health Medical Center in the amount of $880,595 for medical and social support services for the HIV Emergency Relief Grant Program in connection with the Ryan White HIV/AIDS Treatment Extension Act of 2009 for the period March 1, 2011 through February 29, 2012, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
It's moved by Mr. Rogers, and it was seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0156.
Resolution Number 2011-0156, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into contracts with various providers for the homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing program for the period September 15, 2009 through July 31, 2012, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective, one, with Cleveland Mediation Center in the amount not to exceed $711,086, two, with Emerald Development and Economic Network Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $641,780, and three, with MHS Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $336,734.
Move to adopt.
All right, moved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? Is there a reason we went all the way back to 2009 on this? We're approving something for expenditures from September.
It was federal stimulus money, but.
Good evening, Madam Chair and committee members. Ruth Gillette, Office of Homeless Services. The homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program dollars are part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. They were awarded to the community starting in September of 2009. These funds are related to the state grant which they are passing through to the county, and so, to make it consistent with the other contracts, we're rolling it back to have the same start date.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Are you in the discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, item 0157.
Resolution Number 2011-0157, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with MHS Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $1,124,293 for operational support of the Norma Hare Women's Center, formerly known as Community Women's Shelter, located at 2219 through 2227 Payne Avenue, Cleveland, for the period January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
Just that we did do a tour of the facility recently, and this is the annual appropriation. It's obviously very important. Like an emergency room down there.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 0158.
Resolution Number 2011-0158, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with the Salvation Army in the amount not to exceed $527,499 for the past transitional housing program in connection with the fiscal year 2009, Continuum of Care for Homeless Assistance Grant Program for the period October 1, 2010 through September 30, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Ms. Conwell, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a, and this is my own fault, and I apologize for this. There was an item that we voted on earlier, Item F, R 2011-0127. During committee meeting, we, I challenged.
I'm sorry, would you just give me that number again?
0127.
Okay, sorry.
I had some questions regarding some of the costs associated with that project, and it asked the petitioner to provide us with more detail subsequent to our meeting. They have not provided us the information I requested. I don't know what the protocol is. At a minimum, I would like to reverse my vote and maybe ask counsel to reconsider their vote until the information is provided, and I don't know if that's even possible.
I don't think so. We've already had a vote.
After the vote has been registered, I don't think it's possible to reverse the vote at this point. Okay. All right, well, very good then. Madam President, I would still request that the petitioner provide us the information that was requested through our Chief of Staff.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Just for parliamentary completeness, although the vote could not be changed, the council member could make a motion to reconsider our action, and we could vote on it again, and even if we decide we still want to move it forward, then he could vote against it when it's reconsidered.
So, Mr. Greenspan, is that your motion to reconsider Item 0127?
I don't think I would have the support for the reconsider, so I don't want to waste our time, but I do want the petitioner to still provide the information, and this has to do with the hourly rate regarding the asbestos remediation. It was 55 an hour, which is $114,000 a year for asbestos remediation. We've had information presented to counsel that the rates range anywhere from $15 to $25 an hour. So, I just want to find out the true facts, because in essence, this number could be reduced if the hourly rate is adjusted to be market rate, not what was presented in the proposal. So, just, so what I'd like to request is that information still be provided to counsel.
But should it be provided to the committee, to the Economic Development Committee, where it came from?
If Mr. Schron would welcome that, that would be fine.
We'll be happy to have it come forward as far as the reaffirmation, but we did get the number at $55, and I believe that that was the information that was presented, that was market rate for asbestos removal in the eyes of the cleanup people, and I guess we have, Mr. Kelly here, he can illuminate on that.
Madam President, to the rest of the council, one of the issues that was brought up by the Economic Development Committee were the wages that were paid for the Brownfield loan, that's a sub-grant agreement to the city of Cleveland. Cleveland said that the wages that are paid to the asbestos removal folks can be about $55 an hour. So, I'll get the detail of that to you. My expectation is that's probably the cost, probably not what the take-home pay is, including training and benefits, but I'll do my best to have that before the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Item 9, Committee Reports and Consideration of an Ordinance for Second Reading Adoption Under Suspension of the Rule.
Madam President.
Mr. Miller.
Madam President, I move that Rule 9D requiring ordinances and resolutions to be considered at three different regular meetings of council be suspended, and that Ordinance Number 2011-0009 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Schron. Discussion on suspension of the rules. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Item 0009.
Ordinance Number 2011-0009, an ordinance authorizing the creation of a Department of Regional Collaboration under supervision of the county executive to advocate for and promote cooperation and collaboration with and among the state of Ohio and other political subdivisions, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Is that Ms. Germana?
Either way. I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Germana. Any comment on this?
Madam President.
Yes.
This is a very important undertaking. We're in a new environment where there's just not money to pay for everything that needs to be done, if we're doing it the same way that it's been done in the past, and we need to work together with other governments to find ways to work together and do things more effectively and efficiently and cost-effectively, and having this office should help.
Mr. Schron.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that the seriousness to which we all need to take, the idea of creating new departments and infrastructure is something that when we start putting forth a department which we know is going to have a secondary life out there, we need to be very cautious of this. But, as Mr. Miller, my colleague, pointed out, the value of creating regionalism is something that we, I believe everybody, probably on this council, when they ran for office, said that they were in favor of and supportive of the idea of that. Mr. Juris has indicated to our committee and our joint committee as far as, in regards to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee also, was a commitment that this will not grow into. grow into a—a huge bureaucracy, but yet it'll be a hands-on approach that Mr. Juris will take, an active role in which he will be participating with the communities, with all the various different sectors. This Saturday, I had actually the opportunity to meet with fire departments in—out of my depart—my area, and with about 15 fire departments on Saturday. They too are waking—are waiting with bated breath to see how can they interface with Mr. Juris as far as the idea of regionalism. I think this is a place where everybody recognizes an opportunity to—to reduce the cost of government, and I'm excited about it. And with the same breath, though, I—I want to make sure we caution ourselves that it doesn't grow into such a large bureaucracy that it becomes a problem in and of itself, so.
Madam Chair, the only thing I'd like to add is—regionalism, besides the regionalism, it's the collaboration, and the making good common sense of saving money and being able to bring down the costs. And by accepting this Department of Regional Collaboration, you know, we're being proactive, and we're—we're saying that, you know, we're going to find the—the ways, Mr. Juris is going to find the best practices, not only regionally, but throughout the country. And we'll be, you know, presenting these—these different initiatives to the county council through the Intergovernmental Collaboration Meeting along with the Economic Development. And I think we're going to have some exciting, proactive initiatives initiated by Mr. Juris. I think he's the right guy for this position.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have it. Item 10, a committee report in consideration of a ordinance for a third reading under adoption of the rules. This is a—this is needed for suspension of the rule because this is a special meeting.
Madam President, I move that the Rule 9D be suspended. That rule requires that ordinances and resolutions be heard at three regular meetings of county council, and that Ordinance Number 2011-0016 be considered for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Simon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Madam Clerk, number is 0016.
Ordinance Number 2011-0016, an ordinance establishing the Department of Law and the powers and duties of the Director of Law, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Madam President?
You're Ms. Simon?
I just wanted to explain a little bit about—
Make the motion first.
—motion for passage and to adopt.
Second.
By Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Miller. Go ahead, Ms. Simon.
Thank you. Just some background, this ordinance has been discussed in committee several times. It's taken on different forms. It's been amended several times. The committee ta—took great strides to make sure that we're able to have a Department of Law to move forward, for our law director to create this department, hire the necessary staff to—to enable us as council to be assisted, as well as the executive, with—with our legal department. And it's amended to basically provide for all the powers, the—the charter grants to the law department, and we will be able to proceed then in consistent—consistently with the charter, and I recommend that we adopt this today.
Any further discussion? Mr. Miller?
I just want to say that I think Councilperson Simon has done excellent work on this legislation, and that—that she's ha—she's had to navigate us through a situation where—where, yes, we got to create this law department so it can operate, but we also have to deal with the—with the lack of clarity that currently exists over that—that department's role and function, and—and I think this legislation gets us where we need to be at this point.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. Madam President?
Yes.
And just for further elaboration, we are waiting, as everybody knows, for this Attorney General opinion, but in the meantime, this ordinance will enable us to proceed with everything that we need for now, and then, when the opinion comes out, the Justice Affairs Committee will reconvene and consider that which comes down through the Attorney General's office, and we will determine at that point whether there'll be any necessary changes to this ordinance.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.—
I'd like to add my name to this.
All right, Mr. Jemanna?
That's what I—
Mr. Schron?
Turn your—
We should have done just before, but let's go ahead and do it. Jemanna, Schron?
Rogers.
Rogers and Conwell?
I'll go on there.
Well—
I'm going to go on.
Is this unanimous?
Madam Chair, when these kind of situations exist, sometimes you might ask who doesn't want to be on it.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to be on it as well.
Okay, I think this is—is everyone on this now?
Or if you're—you know, there's an easier way to do this.
All right, is anyone not on this?
No. Eight.
Okay.
Who's—who else? Were everyone?
Everyone, okay. Yes, Mr. Miller?
I would also like to have my name added to the one on Intergovernmental Relations and Collaboration.
Well, we see—we should have done this before, and this—the—we haven't changed the rules yet, so— Gallagher's over here, he didn't tell me to do this, so. All right, so, yeah, that—that's okay, you're going to add it on? All right, Ms. Schron, I would—would indicate to you that your job security is getting a little shaky here. Mr. Phillips read the resolutions at the last committee meeting, and his deep resonance echoed through the chamber, so.
Have the voice of Cuyahoga County Council.
All right, anything under miscellaneous committee reports?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We're canceling the Intergovernmental and Collaboration Meeting for this—this Monday.
Okay.
This next Monday, Easter—Easter Monday.
Okay. Mr. Schron?
I anticipate that the—the—the meeting that we're going to have is going to probably get called at 2:00, because the—the list for economic development is growing for the meeting in two weeks, so.
You know, talking about these committee reports, we have had discussions—the clerk and I, and then Mr. Jones have been involved. We may have to talk about at some point rearranging our schedule of meetings for committees, because particularly the Public Works Committee, because things come out of council on Tuesday, the meeting is set for Wednesday, and we're not able to get the background information. And so, some meetings, like Economic Development and Public Works and Human Resources, meets more frequently, so I think what we're going to do is send around a schedule of all the committee meetings, and we can kind of start thinking about how we're going to manipulate that—manipulate maybe is not the right word, but change some of these meetings so that they are more timely in terms of getting the information after the committee. Because I know, Mr. Schron, a lot of times your meeting meets on Tues—on Monday, and then we have the meeting on Tuesday, and it's really hard to get all the information onto the agenda.
That—that's fine, and I—I misspoke. It—it—it is next week, I—I apologize. When you were—when you were canceling your meeting because of Easter Monday, we—we are still scheduled, and I would—would love to take your hour that you were—you were giving up, and—and go—go at 2:00, because I think that—it's 2:00, yes, because I think the list of witnesses and things coming forward on the construction reform is growing now. We—I think at least three, maybe four witnesses that day.
Okay, so—so that's something you can all kind of—and kind of coordinate with this. Mr. Phillips has been kind of working ahead, keeping that schedule. Any other miscellaneous committee reports?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just on the lines of what—what you just said, I would just mention that I—I prepared a draft amendment for the rules of council that clarifies that—that those—
At my suggestion.
At your suggestion, yes. And—and—and that—that was circulated around today, so when we get back to that—that project, we can adopt that amendment.
Right, the orig—the original rule just said that we had to set a schedule, and there was no provision to—to change the schedule, so we're going to add something to the rules on that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other miscellaneous committee reports? Under miscellaneous, this is—we have Mr. Bibb, who got canceled out last week, and—
I made it for the second round. Before I begin, though, I'd like to recognize our students that are in the room today, if that's okay?
It's fine.
We have students from the Cleveland Job Corps Academy. Guys, please go on up. Don't be shy, don't be shy. We wanted to recognize them for their community service efforts in the community that will take place April 22 on Earth Day. They'll join thousands of students across the country in volunteering in their community to solve issues related to environmental justice, and we wanted to recognize them for their service. We also wanted to challenge them to ensure that this isn't just a—a one day of service, but also begins a commitment of service to your community, because we know that as elected officials and as members of the administration, we can't solve these problems alone, and we need your help to make our communities better, to improve the quality of life. And so, we want to honor you for your service, and we hope that you will use this as a challenge to become agents of change in your local community. And with that being said, Mr. Taylor?
Now, are these folks local?
Yes.
You're all local?
Cleveland Job Corps Academy.
But I mean, some of the people from Job Corps come from other locales.
Exactly, exactly.
But these folks are local?
Some are, or some—
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Taylor. I know a number of you. On the behalf of the Cleveland Job Corps Academy, I'm going to have the president say a few words, but there's 440 students at the Cleveland Job Corps Center located on 140th off of St. Clair, off of Coit Road. The mixture of the Job Corps, 16 to 24, we come from Detroit, Ohio, Chicago. We have a number of vocational programs that we partnership with the county, such as facility maintenance, sign and design, carpentry, that piece, and we have an LPM program, a health piece with the STNA program. So, we are continuously partnering with you guys, so we appreciate you here. Earth Day is a national piece, and on Sunday, everyone here went to the Cleveland Metropolitan Zoo. This morning, we were on 93rd and Harvard doing our community service with hands on Northeast Ohio. On Thursday, we're going to clean up our center, but to answer your question, it's 60% of our students come from the greater Cleveland, Northeast Ohio. Okay? And I'm going to—
Good evening, madam—madam Chair and Committee members. I am the president of student government at Cleveland Job Corps Academy. There's been a number of events that we have done in the community, far as community-wise. One event that he did not mention, we have raised $200 for the Heart for Hunger. That just recently took place. They are coming down to the Cleveland Job Corps Academy on April 27 to the Student Government Assembly. That is one—even—that's one major event that we had took place at the center, along with the other events that took place at our center as well. There's many, many more events to come along, far as community service for the Cuyahoga County and—in the area that we in.
Oh, give us your na—yeah, you know what, you didn't give us your name. You didn't give us your name.
My name is Mickey Robinson III.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We appreciate all of you coming. Mr. Bibb, you can sit down if you like, or you want me?
I don't mind standing.
Okay, all right.
I've been sitting all day, it's fine. So, thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to brief you on the administration's goals and initial thinking about how the county can play an effective role in education reform in Northeast Ohio. I think we all recognize that as a region, we're at a critical crossroads right now, and as we chart our path back to economic prosperity, the challenge of addressing the issues of education reform are critical. And when I'm reminded of this challenge before us, I often think of that great quote by President John F. Kennedy, who once said that "We should think of education as a means of developing our greatest abilities, because in each of us lies private dreams and ambition, which if fulfilled contributes to the benefit of everyone and makes our nation stronger." So, if Cuyahoga County is going to be a competitive and 21st century marketplace in a global economy, then having a world-class system of education and having a world-class system of higher learning will be critical to make that a realized dream and concept for our residents here in Northeast Ohio. And so, before I kind of give you some important data points about where the county is and some key educational outcomes, I want to give you some background about who I am and my experience in this sector. Before joining the administration, I was Director of the American Civic Health Index in Washington, DC at the National Conference on Citizenship. And before that position, I was Associate Partner and Director of Community Strategies at Gallup, where I led a number of issues and initiatives related to education reform, both globally and also here in the United States. And I also worked to develop a national nonprofit in Washington, DC to really address the issues of service learning in one of the poorest neighborhoods in Washington, DC, in the Anacostia neighborhood. So, I've been on the front lines of education reform, and this is an important issue for me personally, and I think through that experience, I've gained a holistic perspective on the importance of data, and how we can develop data-driven solutions to address the issues as relates to education moving forward ahead. And so, I—I want to talk about kind of where we are as a region on some three critical components. First and foremost, the dropout crisis. Right now, in Cuyahoga County, we—we're facing a tremendous issue related to the high school graduation rate. Nationally, you have about 1.2 million kids dropping out of high school every year. That's one kid every 26 seconds. And President Obama has set an audacious goal of ensuring that 90% of students across the country are graduating high school by 2020. So, right now, in Cuyahoga County, nationwide, we have the largest gap between urban and suburban districts who aren't graduating on time. In Northeast Ohio and in Cuyahoga County, we have 71.3% of students graduated from high school. In Ohio, we have about 80% of students graduated from high school. But, right now, Cuyahoga County, as compared to our local statewide counterparts, we have more kids in failing schools. 37.2% of our students in Cuyahoga County are in failing schools. So, that's more combined between Franklin and Hamilton County. So, we have a huge, huge problem as it relates to failing schools and our high school graduation rate that we have to address in a very effective and deliberate way. Secondly, the achievement gap, and—and most people don't realize how the achievement gap nationally impacts our global economy, which has huge implications for our local economy as well. McKinsey has recently done a study, and they've can—have actually done the modeling to show that the achievement gap between minority students and their white counterparts is equivalent to a permanent national economic recession. And so, that's happening nationally. Imagine what it's doing right here in Northeast Ohio. Currently, in Cuyahoga County, we have a 21.9% achievement gap, and in Cleveland in particular, we have a 40% achievement gap. And so, before we begin talking about economic development and the—in the building of great buildings as relates to our economic resurgence, to get the real symbols and the substance of a renaissance requires us to really address this issue of the achievement gap head-on and right-on in a very systematic way. Now, in terms of the issue of college and career readiness, we have a historic opportunity in Cuyahoga County right now with the new mandate in the charter, which gives us the mandate to create a countywide scholarship program for county residents. And there's a huge economic incentive to think deliberately about that project. Right now, in Cuyahoga County, about 27% of Northeast Ohio residents have a bachelor's degree or higher, and that's a decent number, but compared to our counterparts in Franklin and Hamilton County, we're still lagging behind there. And Seagulls for Cities, which is a national organization, has done a study, and they said that if we can increase college attainment in Northeast Ohio by just 1%, we can actually increase personal income by $2.8 billion right here in Northeast Ohio. So, there's a huge value proposition for really addressing the issues of college attainment and college and career readiness right here in Cuyahoga County. And we think that through the countywide scholarship program, we have a imperative to really tie that to workforce development to address that issue, so we can actually see how that can impact our development and competitive efforts moving—moving forward. And so, I want to give you a deep dive on some strategic initiatives that we're thinking about in terms of how the county can play a proactive role in addressing the issues of educational equity right here in Northeast Ohio. First and foremost, before we begin even thinking about investing huge dollars in expanding universal pre-kindergarten or creating a countywide scholarship program, we have to really be proactive about systems change. And the county, being the largest deliverer of social services in Northeast Ohio, how do we ensure that our social service delivery system is tied to K through 12 outcomes? And so, right— And so, right now, in Northeast Ohio and in Cogga County, we have some great things happening in pockets of communities, where they're piloting best ways to merge social service systems, community support systems, workforce development systems, all together to really meet the whole needs of the child. So, we have the MyCom initiative, which the Cleveland Foundation and the county has supported, which is addressing out-of-school time. We have a great program happening right now in the Broadway Slavic Village neighborhood, where you have the Third Federal Foundation leading an effort to really address, how do you get workforce development in the schools? How do you build parent engagement? And how do you address the college access issue by combining all those resources together under one umbrella? Also, in the Central Neighborhood, and I know Councilman Jones is participating in that project in the Central Neighborhood, they're creating a Promise Zone project modeled after the highly successful program in Harlem after Jeffrey Canada's leadership, to really look at how to build community-wide support and systems change on addressing the whole needs of the child. And so, taking those three case studies, our initial thought is, how do we look at those best practices and principles and scale that countywide? And what type of technical assistance do we need to do that and make that really happen in a very substantive and deliberate way moving forward? And on the issue of the post-secondary scholarship program, as many of you know, the county executive issued a $7 million challenge on the issue of expanding UPK countywide and also for creating a countywide scholarship program. We've been in some very great conversations thus far with the Cleveland Foundation, the Gunn Foundation, College Now Greater Cleveland, and various nonprofits in the community about how can the city and the county and our huge nonprofit sector institutions come together to think about creating this countywide scholarship program? And I think over the next few months, we'll have a very robust idea about how that can look and how we can get support moving forward on that project. We know that we want that project to not only help kids go to college, but we also want to ensure that our universities are doing their due diligence of addressing retention and access, because it's one thing to send a kid to college, but a lot of kids aren't graduating from college. And how do we incentivize universities to put the right mentoring in place, the right retention programs in place to ensure our kids are graduated from college and getting high-paying jobs once they graduate? We also want to make sure that as we scope and develop this scholarship program, that we're looking at how it's addressing the workforce development deficit right here in Northeast Ohio. And so, how do we be intentional about ensuring that we're addressing the pipeline of our workforce and creating a systematic way to address the workforce demand needs that are being created in healthcare, biotechnology, advanced manufacturing, and et cetera? In terms of regional academic standards, nationwide, you have about 41 states have joined a national effort to adopt Common Core standards. And the huge impetus behind this project was the fact that in the No Child Left Behind legislation, if you're a student taking reading in Mississippi, your scores aren't the same in California. So, right now, in every state, they're measuring reading differently. So, every state has different goalposts prior to measure kid's success. So, as a nation, we can't benchmark ourselves globally if all of our states aren't competing effectively and have the same Common Core standards. And Ohio has joined that effort to adapt Common Core standards. And so, how do we ensure that regionally, we're looking at regional ways to ensure that if you're a student in Maple Heights and you go to school in Cleveland Heights, an A is an A? If you're in CMSD and you're going to Warrensville, how do we ensure that they're getting the right curriculum and that an A in Cleveland can't be an A in Warrensville Heights? And so, having those conversations with our regional superintendents about regional academic standards ensures that we have the right accountability in place to ensure that we hold schools accountable in a very effective way. Early childhood education. As I mentioned before, the county executive has made a huge commitment to think about how the county can play a very substantive role in advancing UPK countywide. Several weeks ago, we had a huge announcement from PNC Bank and the Gunn Foundation. They had a $1.3 million investment into thinking about how we can expand our universal pre-kindergarten programs countywide. And so, we're going to be looking at innovative models to continue doing that moving forward. We've already lobbied our state and federal legislators to increase funding for that initiative. And we know that investments in early childhood education pay huge economic dividends to our local community. The Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis has actually just done a report, and they calculated a 16% return on investment for local communities that invest in early childhood programs. And so, we know that early childhood programs have a huge economic benefit for our local communities, because the kids getting the right pre-kindergarten readiness skills, they're more likely to succeed in elementary school and high school and graduate on time. And they're also more likely not to go to jail and be dependent on our social welfare system. And so, in this age of the new normal, and as governments have less resources, these targeted investments have a huge impact on our bottom line moving forward. So, it's important that we think strategically about this issue as we look at budgetary problems and budgetary challenges in the months and years ahead. And lastly, it's fascinating that we're, as a region, moving towards regional collaboration. And as you know, our schools, particularly in Cleveland, face a huge fiscal crisis. And for schools to be managed effectively in this age of austerity, it's going to be important that, right here in Northeast Ohio, that we incentivize schools to collaborate and share services. So, if I'm in Richmond or Lynnhurst, how do we share a bus service to save taxpayer dollars? If I'm in Shaker and Warrensville, can we work together to have a grant from the federal government to foster teacher accountability and new standards on teacher effectiveness? If we're in Cleveland Metropolitan School District, how do we work with all of our regional school districts to have one data bank to hire teachers and incentivize our best teachers to work in the poorest, most needed school districts in our region? So, these are some of the initial things we're thinking about in terms of regional solutions to education reform, that I think in the long term can have a huge effect on our local economy. And so, before I open up for questions and get your input, I want to share an anecdotal story with you, because I think it resonates about the challenge ahead of us and how your partnership will allow us to move forward in a very effective way to address the needs of our children right here in Cogga County. I just read a book. It's called The Other Wes Moore. And it's about a kid from Baltimore, who grew up in the inner city of Baltimore. And his dad died at an early age, and he had a hard time dealing with that. So, his mom shipped him off to military school. And he ran away from military school, and his mom said, "You know what? This is your last shot. Rest of my walking out of your life." And he got his act together, and he ended up becoming the first African-American World Scholar from Johns Hopkins in Baltimore. Then he went on to be a White House Fellow in the Bush Administration. And now, he's a high-profile investment banker on Wall Street, and he's lived a very successful life. But when he received the World Scholarship, he was on the front page of the Baltimore Sun. And the same day he was on the front page of the Baltimore Sun for his accomplishments, there was another article in the Metro section. And another guy named Wes Moore was sent to jail for killing a cop in a jury robbery. And the mother of the kid who was sent to jail, the other Wes Moore, had a scholarship to Johns Hopkins, Johns Hopkins College in Baltimore, but her Pell Grant ran out her second year, and she had to drop out of college. And she never made it back to being a productive citizen, because she had no real access to a good job and a good future. And it had a huge impact on her child. And now, her child is in jail for the rest of his life because of that one, that one crime he committed. And I think, I think that story resonated with me a lot, because it shows you that all of our destinies are interconnected. And the choices that we make right now as agents in public policy has a huge impact on the families and the livelihoods of the citizens in Northeast Ohio. And so, a program like the scholarship program has the opportunity to break the cycle of poverty and really build sustainable wealth creation in our communities. And so, I like to say, this is our Sputnik moment to have a huge impact in education. And I think that we are in a very historic moment of change and opportunity, and I think we'll have a huge chance at making an effective impact on our region on education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bibb. Very well said. What district do you live in?
I live in Garfield Heights. Just moved back...
Oh, good. You don't live in my district, because you might try and run against me. That was outstanding presentation. Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Miller?
Madam President, to Mr. Bibb, could you say a little bit more about the particular role that you're going to play and how you, how you intend to do it in helping bring these things about?
Certainly. So, the first few months that I've been on board, really, I wanted to take a deliberate approach of doing just stakeholder interviews to get a sense of the issues, to know the stakeholders in the community. I think now, I'm at a point now where we really know what the agenda and the challenges are. And so, I've been working with these community partners, like the Cleveland Foundation, on bringing the county and the city together to work with our nonprofit partners on developing this community-wide scholarship program. Secondly, I've reached out to other stakeholders in education. The county executive and I have already met with the First Ring Superintendents Collaborative to talk about how we can begin having these regional conversations on education. I've also begun having early conversations with the Cogga County Education Service Center about how they can play a role as a conduit to bring the shared services issue to the table with our local school districts. And I've also begun working with Monica Price at the City of Cleveland. She's Chief of Education, as well as Eric Gordon. We begin to have a very collaborative relationship about how the county can play an effective role. And so, really, what I'm trying to do is be a convener and a collaborator and really try to connect the dots in a more effective way, because I don't want to reinvent the wheel. We don't have the resources or the time to do that. But, you know, my main focus and agenda has been, what role can the county play to be an accelerator and a catalyst to get these things done in a more effective and deliberate fashion?
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Bibb, for the excellent presentation. And I know you've been very busy. The folks that I talk to out in the education community say that they've been meeting with you and are very impressed. I'm just wondering, have you had conversations? We recently had, I believe it was our economic development, or no, it was the Finance Committee meeting a couple days ago, and we were given a brief presentation on the recently announced $100 million fund that the county executive has proposed putting together. And I'm wondering if you've had any discussions with him concerning use of that fund towards some of your educational proposals?
Yes, we have. And as you know, we're going to have a pot of money for the $100 million Economic Development Fund, but also an additional $7 million for education investments. The model we're looking at comes out of Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh's Promise. And in Pittsburgh, you had the large hospital there put out a $100 million challenge to the community to invest in this, the Pittsburgh Promise Scholarship Program. And so, it's our thought that we want to have, we want to have other stakeholders put skin in the game. But I think we have a huge opportunity to show the public sector partnership first, and then leveraging that partnership to challenge our philanthropic and private sector partners to match that funding is one big idea we have to really fund a scholarship program. But if we don't couple that challenge grant with the real value proposition for the private sector foundations to invest in this, then we're missing our opportunity. And so, that's where the hard work comes in, in terms of, you know, why would they want to invest in this? What's the real return on investment? And why does it make sense? And so, articulating what that value proposition is, is one of our first tasks.
As far as the regional academic standards, how have those conversations been received? And is it your idea or thought that Cogga County's academic standards would be more rigorous than state standards?
Well, they would be aligned with the state standards. But, you know, it's our thought that we really want to adopt the 21st century skills model that's coming out of the federal government, out of the Department of Education. The Cogga County Education Service Center is already working with the First Ring Superintendents on a project on 21st century skills. And the mayor has also expressed an interest in regional academic standards. Now, that conversation is one that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of patience, because every school has their own autonomy in terms of the curriculum and teaching standards, et cetera. But having, I think even just starting off with a common set of core indicators, saying you want every, every school in Cogga County to have this number of kids graduating from high school on time, we want every kid in Cogga County to have this number passing the OGT, gives us the right framework to move towards regional academic standards down the line.
Mr. Schreier?
Thank you, Mr. Bibb. That was, that was very, very well, well-presented. Your chart indicates that your concern is on that 40%, or one of your concerns is out there. But yet, I'm trying to figure out where we fit as a county in regards to CMSD. That's a separate entity, separate activity, separate decision process. How do you see the county fitting in to, for example, Dr. Sanders's program for the transformation that was started? And where do we fit in that whole thing? Because that's, that's truly a strategic plan and to move that in a different direction after it's already moving down the road. I just wanted to hear where your thoughts are in regards to how we fit with CMSD?
Well, that's a great question. And in my first month, I met with Eric Gordon, who's Chief Academic Officer. And I asked him bluntly, how can we play an effective role? The first thing he said was, you know, we got to find a way to coordinate all the social services that the county has and delivers in Cleveland, how to coordinate, how to coordinate that with the transformation plan. So, I took that, that challenge, and I said, "Well, how does a county create a framework that's tied to the CMSD transformation plan, but that's also tied to all the great work that's happening in our other first ring and outer ring suburbs?" And so, after that conversation, the big idea is, right now, we've been in early conversations with NYU Center for Metropolitan Urban Education. They created the bigger, better, bolder approach model in Newark, New Jersey, that's being led by Mayor Cory Booker right now. And that's also being developed by Pedro Noguera, who's a leading expert on social service delivery system and how it ties to educational outcomes. It's my thought of, how do we take the bits and pieces of the transformation plan out of CMSD, take all the great work happening in our other school districts, and help use that as a framework for the county plan? But also, if the county has this systems change that's tied to the CMSD transformation plan, but that's also integrated to the interventions of the other school districts in our community, then we're being a collaborative partner. One concrete example of that, I had a great meeting with some folks in Broadway who are working on parent engagement at CMSD. And a principal from the Mound STEM Science Academy said, "The number one problem we have right now is attendance." So, if the county could possibly tie benefits to attendance, then you're creating an accountability mechanism to ensure parents are sending their kids to school every single day. So, that's a policy that doesn't cost a lot of money, but it creates a behavioral economic incentive for parents to have accountability and increased parent engagement. And it's also a new way of looking at how social innovation can help inform more accountability in our local school systems.
It doesn't cost a lot of money, but are you prepared to, is this administration prepared to take that step that's pretty dramatic as far as tying social support systems to a child's academic performance? I mean, that's, I didn't realize we were going to be making news tonight. I thought we were just gathering information.
In no way are we saying that we're going to, you know, tie that to student outcomes. However, what we want to do is think about some big ideas and brainstorm best ways that the county can play a proactive role in addressing not only the social service needs of CMSD, but also the educational needs of CMSD. And so, how do we be a collaborative partner to have those tough conversations and concretely think about innovative practices to do that? And so, I think it's all about having frank and honest debates, but also not being, not being afraid to challenge our own thinking and really think outside the box about how we tackle these tough problems.
Being somebody who's very actively involved with CMSD, I would highly suggest we link ourselves to those strategies that are, they're becoming those islands of successes that we've gotten, CMSD, between Max Hayes and between the Career Academies that are going on. I think that if we can reinforce those some way as a county, it just seems to me it can get a multiplier effect that you're looking for.
Yep. I mean, and I think one opportunity is, you know, facilities is a big, big problem. And so, how can the county help with that? You do have great islands of excellence, like you said, and I think we can be a good collaborative credit system of excellence moving forward.
Mr. Jamana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I certainly understand, you know, we've been presented, even before we were sworn in, about early childhood development. And certainly, the idea about scholarship is great for the kids that are succeeding. What, you know, when you said that 35% of the schools are failing, I mean, it's not the schools that are failing. It's, is it the teachers? Is it the students? Is it the parents? And what plans do we have for that? Because, you know, I'm thinking that, that's 30,000, is that 30,000 kids?
48,000, sir.
48,000?
48,000 kids in Cogga County right now are in failing schools.
48,000.
48,000.
We've got to do something about that. I mean, early childhood development is not going to help those 48,000 kids.
I agree.
And if they're in failing schools, they're certainly not going to be getting scholarships. And even the Carita Scholarship, what do we, what do we, what plans do we have in that regard?
Well, that's a, that's a tough question. I think our plan right now is to be... I think our plan right now is to be very deliberate about how do we internally have systems changed that can impact those failing schools, impacted families of kids who are in subpar schools? Secondly, it's while, you know, you could be a kid in a failing school at John Adams High School, but by having a county-wide scholarship program which you qualify for, that kid has a shot. And that family has a shot after that. And I think lastly, it's articulating and incentivizing our communities to take more of an interest in reforming our local school systems and really putting students first. Usually, when you look at education reform right now nationally, it's usually a conversation between politicians, unions, and interest groups. But kids are rarely a part of that conversation. And so in the first few months of the administration, I've already met twice with the Cogu County Youth Advisory Committee about how youth voice can be a part of the education reform agenda. And I think that it's going to take a lot of organic approaches to get that groundswell movement to really change education. But we just can't blame it on teachers. We just can't blame it on the unions. We just can't blame it on parents. We just can't blame it on politicians. We all need to look in the mirror and think about how we can critically change the direction of our schools because we're competing in a global economy. And the kids in Beijing, the kids in Bangalore, they're all studying almost 12 to 14 hours a day. They're competing. The stakes are high. The stakes are too high for us not to have a sense of urgency about this issue. And so I would even challenge all of us in this room to go back home tonight and think about how each and every one of us can mentor a kid every day or once a month. Because having a mentor has a huge impact on each and every one of us and those kids. We can all think about someone who mentored us in our lives, that one great teacher, that one great sports coach. That's why we're here today. And so I think it's about individual accountability first, and then we can have the right change.
Any further questions? Thank you very, very much, Mr. Bibb. I think there's been some really interesting questions. And I think that we would like to hear from you probably in a couple of months. Put you on the agenda because we want to keep, this is such an important topic, that we want to keep abreast of it and not to say monitor your progress, but you know, hear what you're doing and see how we can assist in working with you to accomplish some of those goals.
And Madam President and members of the council, any ideas, any things happening in your community that I can be helpful on or with? We'd love your partnership to make this happen because we can't do it alone. So, thank you.
All right. We'll look to hear from you sometime in mid-June.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment unrelated to the agenda? The next meeting of council will be on Tuesday, June 26th, at regular meeting at 6 o'clock. Our work session will be at 4. Did I say June? I just said June. It's been a long day, folks. I've been here since 1 o'clock. April, April 26th, at 6 o'clock for our regular meeting. And April 26th at 4 o'clock, a continuation of the discussion of the rules which we started today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, if I may, I just wanted to, you had some papers in front of you this evening and it had to do with a database that we are beginning to put together. I've asked Nikki to kind of head up and spearhead this particular project so we can get a handle, at least, you know, on paper, on how we're tracking our legislation. And so I was going to ask her to kind of go into it, but it's late. But if anyone has any suggestions, obviously in front of you, there's the, just motions were put on here. We just wanted to have something kind of to have it flow to give you an idea where we are headed. So if anyone has any suggestions for the tracking of information or any information that you would like to have tracked that we don't have on this item, because what we're hoping to do in the end, the result of all of this, is if you call and say, I'd like a report on such and such, then we would be able to provide you with the information that you are looking for. So if you'd let Nikki and myself know if you have any suggestions for improvement of this, we'd appreciate it. We can only print it out in like these three pages. It is continuous. But in order to get it on one page, it would have been really, really, really small for you to see it. So that's why it looks like it's on three pages. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? All right. All those in favor, Nikki, we sign aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Motion means adjourn.